Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Carey? Chilson?
Present.
Parker?
I'm present. My video is, can't start, so. I'm present.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Present.
Ruffridge?
Here.
There's a request for an excused absence for Councilmember Nelson in the packet and Student Representative Knowles.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Second from Mr. Carey. Are there any changes to the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Seeing none, would the clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
Approval of the December 1st, 2021 council meeting minutes. New business ordinances. Ordinance 2021-27 authorizing the city manager and the city attorney to sign an agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for a grant provided under the American Rescue Plan Act for the Saldana Municipal Airport and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $32,000 in the Airport Fund, introduced by the city manager, Public Carey, on January 12th, 2022. Resolution 2021-59 authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Orion Construction, Inc. in the amount of $1,704,400 for the Saldana Regional Sports Complex major maintenance and renovation construction project, introduced by the city manager. Resolution 2021-60 authorizing the purchase of calcium chloride for $30,745.80 from North Star Supply LLC, introduced by the city manager. Resolution 2021-61 adopting an alternate allocation method for the FY22 Shared Fisheries Business Tax Program and certifying that this allocation method fairly represents the distribution of significant effects of fisheries businesses' activity in FMA 14 Cook Inlet Area, introduced by the city manager. New business action other. Action memorandum 2021-24 mayoral appointments to advisory boards and commissions. Airport Commission Nancy Eoff, Employee Relations Board Barbara Bellamini, Library Advisory Board Gloria Sweeney, and Cheryl Mailer. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Penny Vodla and Denise Dutille. Planning and Zoning Commission Charlene Totfest and Jenny Smithwick. All terms are to expire in December 31st, 2024. Action memorandum 2021-25, Appointment of Deputy Clerk Hewitt as Acting City Clerk. Action memorandum 2021-26, A Request for an Excused Absence from the December 15th, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting, Councilmember Nelson. And that is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Seeing no one wishing to speak here in the council chambers, and I see no hands raised on Zoom. Having no, the Consent Agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing none or hearing none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved. Moving on to item number four on the agenda. Presentation with prior notice, the Alaska Yukon Chapter of the North American Versatile Hunting Dog Association Mini Grant Report by Ken Gates, President of the Alaska Yukon Chapter of North American Versatile Hunting Dog Association. Mr. Gates, please step forward.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to actually come in person and present without video. It's been quite a couple of years for myself. I work for Fish and Wildlife, and we're pretty much sequestered to video, so thank you. I'm here to present today representing the Alaska Yukon NAVDA Chapter. We're one of 83 chapters nationwide and through Canada, representing and promoting the larger organization of North American Versatile Hunting Dog Association. Our chapter spans all of Alaska and Yukon Territory. So we're geographically dispersed over a large area. Our primary goals are to conduct testing each year, promote ethical breeding practices, and train versatile hunting dog breeds. So, and part of that, we try to give back each year to the community, whether it's here locally or somewhere else throughout Alaska or Yukon. So this last year, we, actually, this is our second year that we partnered with the Locals Safari Club International Chapter to host a women's and youth hunt. And so we applied for your micro grant, and I don't know if everyone here received a handout that I submitted through Breck? Great. So I won't really go read it verbatim, but has anybody participated in the event over the years? No? If you ever get an opportunity, you really should. Or if you have granddaughters or grandsons, it's a great opportunity to expose them to something that they may not otherwise have the opportunity to do. So I'll just briefly go over the day activities and kind of illustrate to you guys what the grant went towards. And in all, to host this event, it costs roughly about $10,000 between ourselves and the Safari Club International. And it's a day where free of charge, any participants can come out. We can host up to about 50 participants. And then it takes about the equivalent amount of volunteers to support those individuals. And the whole goal of the day is to expose women and youth to upland shooting sports or upland hunting, clay target shooting, and just kind of expose them to something new. And our target audience is typically people who don't otherwise have the opportunity to do those activities with the hope of, you know, garnering their interest in those types of activities and get them outdoors. So the way the day operates is after months of planning, individuals come out. And in a nutshell, there's three stations. There's clay target shooting, so they get introduced to handling firearms and shooting clay targets. The Women on Target program, they come out and facilitate that part of the day. And then Safari Club International, as people migrate through that station, they end up shooting stationary birds, live birds out of stationary bird launchers, and that kind of settles their nerves a little bit. We have retrieved dogs, and then after that, they come over to our event, which is actually hunting behind versatile hunting dogs. So versatile hunting dogs, by our definition, are pointers who do track, field, water work, fur, and upland game birds. So we bring out, we had about 30 dogs this year that came out to showcase their skills and abilities. And then basically, as they migrate through the field, each participant, there's two at a time, and they have backup shooters. Each participant has a coach to help them through the event. And then you have a dog handler and a dog. And so a lot of our expenses are associated with the birds, obviously. So we had about close to 320 chuckers that we used this year, and they're not cheap. They're about $20 a bird. So we spent, on average, right around $6,000 just in birds to host the event for the day. So that's our biggest cost. And then beyond that, we host a lunch and provide all the participants with T-shirts to take home and cookbooks to how to cook their game. We teach them how to clean birds. So they're taking home, you know, some of them really get into it and take a dozen or more birds home. Is that my time? And anyways, so it's a great event for, we have women and children, grandmothers, granddaughters coming out, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Carey?
What an awesome group. Boy, Alaska and Yukon. Hugh, Jerry, she already said, would you tell me about your members, how many there are, and anything else you want to say? I just want to learn more.
Sure. Yeah, we have about 160 members currently. We're rolling over into our new gear, so it fluctuates each year. But we've got, the bulk of our membership resides in the Anchorage-Metsu Valley area, obviously. And, but we have a pretty strong contingency down here in Kenai-Saldana, Homer, Seward, we have a couple of members, Fairbanks, and then, of course, over in White Horse area, we have some members. In our chapter alone, we've probably got, have a more diverse dog community. We've probably got about 15 or 20 different breeds that are, you know, pretty popular within our chapter.
When you say chapter, you mean Saldana or Kenai?
The chapter covers all of Alaska and Yukon.
That's all of the whole chapter?
Yeah.
Do, how do you guys, do you mean, do you meet here in different places? I'm just kind of interested in your organization.
Yeah, so the way we function, we're a 501(c) nonprofit, so we have a board, and we have seven seats on the board. I'm currently the president, and we have quarterly board meetings throughout the year. And when the season gets pretty busy, we go to monthly board meetings just to keep up on all our events. We host multiple events throughout the year. Like, the wintertime, we have a lot of obedience, train and retrieve classes that we offer to our members, and it really draws in a lot of new membership. And then we have pro clinics. We fly up pro trainers in June typically to bring in new ideas and new training techniques to expose our members to that. And then we, last year, we hosted three tests, two in the valley and one down here in Saldana, tested about 70 dogs. And the tests are to evaluate against the national standard on field and water work, basically. And then, and then we host, we finished the season out with the women's and youth hunt. So this was our fourth or fifth year as an organization doing the youth hunt.
I'll make this last question because I don't want to worry you out. But in many organizations, they've got a lot of older people, and often it's difficult to get younger someone. Do you have any young members?
We do, and that's a big target of ours, is draw new member, new young members in. So we promote youth handlers and youth members. We have a lot of incentives for them to pay their test fees, their, waive their membership fees and things like that. But we do have a handful of youth members, and, you know, I think on average, I'm just talking off the top of my head, probably maybe mid-30s to 40 range is probably the going age of our chapter now.
Excellent. Thank you for all you guys do, and I'm glad our grant assisted you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Any other, Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you back. Just a question on the testing. I don't know much about this world, so I agree with Councilmember Carey. There's questions there. So if you have 70 dogs show up for a test, how many of those would you say, on average, like exceed those national standards in a testing cycle? Or get to the standard?
That's a really good question, and that's really a function of a couple of things. One, how well senior membership help the other members train their dogs, but it really boils down to individuals putting the time and effort into their dogs. And I don't have a number off the top of my head, but I, we have an individual day and weekend capacity for the test. So that was 70 dogs over three different, three-day weekend tests. So, you know, upper-level dogs, we can only test six dogs in a day because there's so many things that we test them at, and it takes a long time to get through that. So that's basically 7:00 a.m. till about 5:00 or 6:00 p.m. before we're done. So it really tests the dog's mental stability to function throughout the whole day. But I would say, on average, maybe 50%, you know? And it really depends. Some of the breeds are, do a lot better than others, but, you know, it really boils down to the handlers putting the time and effort into them. Yep.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, I do have one or two. What time of year is this held?
Typically, the first weekend in October. So it was October 2nd this year, down here.
Okay, and next year, will it be held down here again?
I'm hoping we'll partner again with Safari Club, so it's a board decision as to what, how they want to proceed with the, this coming year. We have a board meeting tomorrow, and we'll be deciding on that tomorrow as well. But we've held a couple up in the valley and then really wanted to work with the Safari Club because they've already got a fairly big draw, so we wanted a little bit of exposure to ourselves. And then we thought we could also improve the day event by bringing our dogs in and add that third component to the day.
Well, I have a granddaughter that would probably love to participate.
Yeah.
Their dog will flunk though. Wouldn't make it through the first day. Probably wouldn't make it through the first hour. Good dog, but not that kind. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate your comments.
Thanks for the opportunity.
All right. Moving on to item five on the agenda is public comments and presentations. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chamber that would like to, please step forward and state your name and address for the record? And you have three minutes.
Daniel Lynch, downtown Saldana. I hope to be accurate here. The rumor mill tells me that Chief Malarnik is moving on to greener pastures, new challenges, and adventures. And he used to be here quite a bit. I just wanted to thank him for his time, effort, and dedication. My interactions and observations with the chief always resulted in the feeling that his honesty, integrity, and calm demeanor are top shelf and nothing less. He ran a tight ship, trained the new guys right, and didn't hide in his office, being afraid to deal with the commoners. And if he was here, I'd say, sir, I wish you the very best in your future endeavors. From the commoners' perspective, Chief Malarnik was excellent, Chief Gifford was excellent, and Chief Luckin was pretty darn good. And I would hope we could see, keep the momentum going in that direction. So to the mayor and the council, I would like to say, when it comes time to replace him, I hope you have major input to fill the position with more equality, not just a crony and a lackey for the administration, because we don't need that. We need to keep the streak going. And seeing as I have another minute left here, when I'm reading your minutes from your last meeting, it says, would give me the thought that Ms. Sainer's moving on. And if that's true, ma'am, to you, all the good things I said about the chief, ditto, ditto. Thank you and best wishes. After a couple of months, you got to be a very highly skilled professional. You know, thank you for that, and I'm upset.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Anyone else in the chamber like to speak on any item that currently on the agenda? Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Tim Dillon, Kenai Peninsula Economic Development, Executive Director. I appreciate Mr. Lynch's comments, and I ditto exactly what he just said. You know, Peter was in my office here a couple of weeks ago and class act from the time I knew him, from when he was a brown shirt and a trooper, too. So good luck with replacing him, but Peter was excellent. And I'm so glad that I'm just going to see Shelley down the road from my office. So Shelley, thank you for everything you've done for me here, and don't worry, I'll be calling on you in Kenai. The reason I wanted to come and speak to you all this evening is just to remind you that on January 6th, we'll be hosting our annual Industry Outlook Forum. It'll be held at the Kenai Visitors Center. We just opened up registration last week. We've got over 60 people registered so far. We do have a hybrid going on, so depending on COVID numbers and things, you can either participate in person or online. We do want to make sure that you register, though, especially if you decide you're going to come in person. Because as most of you remember, everything is free, so the continental breakfast, the lunch, all that's free, and I want to make sure that I have enough food for everybody. Again, this year, we have a tremendous lineup. Everything from tourism updates to, instead of doing a COVID update, we actually have the president and CEO of the Alaska State Hospital and Nursing Home Association to talk about medical services and their impact on the economy, especially over here in Saldana and in the central part of the peninsula. I think those are going to be some very interesting numbers to look at. Transition and succession planning. Everything from our normal gas and oil updates, statewide SEDs update, a little bit more about the Kenai Peninsula solar farm that we've been working on. And then, any of you that have listened to the news in the last day or so, hopefully you've heard about mariculture and the role that we are in the process of playing. We actually have Julie Decker, the CEO of Alaska Fisheries Development Foundation. They are actually one of our partners. There's five of us involved that we found out two days ago that in the Build Back Better Grant Program with the federal government, there were over 500 applications. They have approved 60 of them nationwide, and we are one of the 60. We are receiving a half a million dollars between the five of us to be able to put together the final product and the final application. That's due on March 15th, and the price tag on that that we're asking for is $50 million to assist with mariculture. And we've got a lot of work ahead of us to be able to prepare that. I actually have talked to your city manager and also to the city manager over in Kenai that we want to make sure that it's not just Homer and Seward that can benefit from mariculture. We want to see how the rest of the cities can play with that also. We also have a variety of other grants that we're in the middle of, including the one here in Saldana. We're keeping on top of all those, and hopefully we'll have some good news for a variety of different organizations on the peninsula. So thank you all very much, and I'd be more than happy to answer questions.
Vice Mayor Parker, I saw you had your hand up.
I did have my hand up, and when I raised my hand, it made the Saldana screen go black, so that's why I lowered it. Thank you, Mr. Dillon, for the presentation. I am familiar with the mariculture programs that we have on the Kenai Peninsula, including the spat farm in Seward. So it's pretty extensive what we have right now. What are you proposing to add?
Well, our goal is not so much to add. The first part is going to be listening and finding out exactly what we have and what level we're at. The concern for us is if we look at us compared to, say, Southeast, most of our organizations, whether it be, you know, over in Seward with Alutec Pride, the University, the Sea Life Center, Jackaloff Bay over, off of Ketchumack Bay, we have a lot of things going on, but most of them are at the, what I would consider to be a cottage industry. What we want to do is see what, first of all, does, do things pencil out? And is there a way to be able to bring things to market at a national level and an international level? And if so, what is needed and how do we do that? The key for us is going to be, yeah, it's great to be producing something, but is that middle mile and the end mile there? It's almost like the whole broadband piece, you know? Do we have people that actually want to spend money and purchase the product? And also, how are you going to get it from the farm to the person? Whether it be the processing, the transportation, all those other pieces, Ms. Parker. So that's what we're looking at. That's what we're trying to put together. And as I said, it's, we've got a lot of work ahead of us between now and March 15th. But as you also know, mariculture is something that for the last, who knows how many years, people have been talking about, you know, if we only had money, you know, we could take this to another level. We could do some other things. And we've tried to get money from the state to help jumpstart some of this. You know, we're fortunate. We have an opportunity at $50 million to help jumpstart this. But we want to make sure that we're spending the money wisely and appropriately between Southeast, Southwest, Prince William Sound, and the Kenai Peninsula.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Ruffridge?
Sorry, that just led to a whole bunch of questions for me. I guess, so I'm familiar with certain mariculture items. I guess you said, if we only had the money, I guess, what is the, what's the money for? What needs enhanced and what are we, what's it going to?
So like, for example, part of it is needed in research because there are some things that are going on around the world, like, for example, some of the oils out of seaweed or kelp being used in some cosmetic products, you know? Is that, and is it worth us taking it from the strand to the oil, you know, from a numbers point? When it comes to dollars, one of the big things that we've heard about here on the Kenai Peninsula and we've tried to assist with is certain oyster growers looking for money for a flopsy, which is the machine that takes the, you know, the seed, the spat, to actually the oyster to the point where you can put it back in the water to get it to start to grow. I am far from being an expert in any of these areas. In fact, Robert Venables in Southeast, we're so glad that they're taking the lead on it. But we're going to be pulling the information out from people all over on the Kenai Peninsula. And that was one of the reasons why I came in to see Stephanie on Monday after we found out, was to find out there may be some mom and pop or small operations here in Saldana that we don't even know about, that maybe we can put our ear to the ground and find out if somebody's got a concept that we can try and see if it pencils out or if they've been working on something. And like, for example, if you've been over to Jackaloff Bay on the other side of the water, they're actually hanging strands of seaweed over there. You've got your oysters over there. You go over to Nanilchik and the gooey ducks. There are some smaller things going on, but is there a way to take it from a cottage industry to, as I said, a full-blown business opportunity that could be providing sustainability in the fisheries area, not only for the Kenai Peninsula, the state of Alaska, but to be able to go nationally and internationally?
So I guess that potential funding, does that go then to, would that be like a loan or a grant to these organizations to start this? Or, I guess, so I have a little bit of information in my personal life with oyster farming and things of that nature. And the people that I am familiar with that do that, I mean, there's actually quite a bit of money in that industry. And if you do it right and you have the waters and, you know, the recipe down to make good oysters, I guess it's, seaweed, I totally understand, you know, there's research needed and things like that. I just wonder, is that, are we trying to promote new businesses or promote the process, I guess? And how does that money get doled out?
Justin, our number one goal is that within the next 10 to 15 years, we would like to see mariculture be a $100 million a year revenue stream for the state of Alaska. This is all part, I don't have all the answers for you tonight, Justin. And that's why we have between now and March 15th to try and pull some of that stuff together. Will we look to do some of it in grants? And what we want to try and do is continue to encourage that private investment. This is an opportunity to take private and public dollars and work together on some things. Some of it has to do with education. Some of it has to do with our favorite topic of workforce. And what other new kinds of jobs can we create for people to be able to stay here on the Kenai Peninsula and in the coastal communities? So we're going to be doing a lot of listening, and as I mentioned, you know, we've got some meetings here this week and next week because, as you can probably imagine, the 30-some-page document now all of a sudden has to turn into a book between now and the 15th of March. And we'll see where it all goes. You're welcome.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you. I'm, hopefully, I can ask a couple of things. Would you anticipate that part of this would be to find value-added dynamics to help people?
Without a doubt.
A lot. An idea, it seems to me that we've had decades now of ideas in the caring for the Kenai. Okay? All kinds of things of, to the extent that's possible. Okay, all kinds of things of, to the extent that's possible, to kind of revisit some of those that might be interesting. Some of those young people who are now adults, you know, they had the wonderful ideas when they were younger and now they've got the wisdom of things that just might be interesting to put it together, just as an idea, at least of information providing education. Also, I just want to let you know, all those funds need to be spent in Soldatna. We have more than enough need. The extra, all that comes with the $50 million, that all needs to be spent in here as well. We have all kinds of ideas. We just, we need the resources. Second, looking.
Can I answer, can I comment on your first thing first? Just so that you know, I do have a phone call into Mr. Sikorsky. And I did have Marnie Alcott in my office today. So, we're heading in that direction because you're right. Those are some great ideas and things. So, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, no, you didn't. But those are wonderful minds that we need to keep developing. You and your staff have an awesome forum here. And I was looking through them, and I was particularly interested. Tell me about the Central Peninsula Young Professionals.
This is an organization of young professionals in the area. And what has happened is around two and a half, three weeks ago, I actually did a workshop for these folks. They're all either in industry or own their own business, have started their own business. They're around 30 folks or so. It's coordinated through the two chambers. They work together. And after the workshop that I did for them a couple of weeks ago, since then, I've had like eight or nine of them that have, you know, called for appointments so that we can help them with different things. And a lot of them are just brand-new entrepreneurs, more than anything else. So, one of the feelings that I got afterwards was, you know, let's put these two women in front of everybody so that there may be some people that don't know about the young professionals, like yourself, that then will hear about it and pass it on to, whether it be their neighbors, grandkids, or kids or whatever, so they can go ahead and continue to work together.
Excellent, I really liked that. And I also thought about elder professionals. I did notice all those young professionals have all these things listed. Safety minute got five minutes. Pledge of Allegiance and overview got five minutes. Everyone else got more than five minutes except the young professionals. I think they deserve at least 10 minutes. They should get at least more of a, but I'm just throwing that out as an idea.
I gave them exactly what they requested.
Well, I bet they'd have loved 10 minutes because they could have done so much more. But you're wonderful. And the last thing. Did you particularly choose this date, January 6th? Should we anticipate any action outside the building or anything like that?
You know, the reason we chose this date had nothing to do with some of the other history behind it. What we always do is we normally have it the first week in January because if there are elected officials from the legislature or commissioners or anybody from the governor's cabinet, they normally do not travel when they're in session. So, in order to give them plenty of time, we have put it there. This is the fourth year in a row that we've used that first week. And it just so happened that it landed on the 6th. But no disrespect towards anybody, but we were looking at, we're looking towards the future, not towards the past.
You and the KPED do excellent work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? And I do have one thing that I wanted to have you do. I was going to mention the C-Belt group, and maybe you can do that and present that information to the council.
So, last summer, I, Robert Venables from Southeast and myself made a presentation to all of the mayors up in Fairbanks on who the ardors were and also what the economic development districts were and what we do. We had an outstanding exchange and things. And what happened coming out of that was several of the mayors here on the Kenai Peninsula and then Kodiak got together and they said, you know what? The rail belt is organized as far as the mayors. And they don't, you know, vote in a block, but they all have common interests and common concerns. Could we try and do something similar with that with C-Belt? And several of the mayors came to me and said, Tim, it seems like, you know, a couple of you ardors are pretty well organized and people know who you are and what you do. Can you help us with that? So, we started during this past AML meeting. We had a meeting at The Cook where we probably had 25 or 30 coastal mayors and some city managers. And we talked a little bit about the five or six main concerns that people had and interests, whether it was our fishing industry, the marine highway, just different things that bring everybody together. And what we agreed to do was Robert, myself, and Nils from AML sat down and we put together a kind of a white paper on the five or six concerns. We organized a meeting here around a week or two ago with all of, all the mayors. I want to say there were 40-some mayors on the call, which really was impressive. We've come back with, there were a couple of things that they've asked us to try and do. And in between everything else, we're trying to put all that together. In fact, I believe sometime today, we sent out an email with the next meeting, which is in January. So, we're trying, again, Capehead and the ardors. We're trying to help do whatever we can for the Kenai Peninsula and making sure that from an economic standpoint and a joint voice that we can provide some of that leadership.
Thank you. We're not, Soldatna is not a coastal community, but I have been participating in these meetings mainly because what happens to Seward, Kenai, and Homer affects Soldatna. So, we've been sitting in on these meetings and seeing what's going on and what we can contribute. And we'll come of it, so.
The other thing, if you don't mind me mentioning, is I've also been asked to, the city managers periodically get together over at my offices and they can close the door. Nobody, you know, has to know what's going on because there's all sorts of combinations of things that people are talking about, you know? Homer has the same problems that Seward has, you know, Kenai, Soldatna, you know? So, just to have that opportunity to mix and mingle and just talk, you know, behind a closed door and just figure out what's going on. And also to try and help things for the future, whether, a couple of years ago, it was insurance. It was workers' insurance and what's everybody doing on that? We've been asked to put something together for the mayors now. So, I believe tentatively, January 5th, the mayors of the incorporated communities here on the Kenai Peninsula will be getting together over at our building for four or five hours and just to chat and talk about some of the things, especially heading into the next legislative session. So.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
I see no hands raised on Zoom to participate. I don't see anyone else here in the chambers. So, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Six, Assembly and Legislative Reports. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? Seeing none here in the chambers and seeing none on Zoom, we'll move on to the next one, which is Administrative Reports. The auditor's presentation by Joy Mariner of BDO USA LLP. And Ms. Marimer, you are on.
Wonderful. Well, hello, everyone. Can you see me?
We can.
Okay, great. Well, hi, it's nice to see you. I wish I were here with you in person. And I apologize for not being there. I came down with a head cold. I called Melanie this morning and talked to her and just said, I mean, I'm happy to still come, but I think, given the times that we're in, it's probably best I don't even bring anybody a head cold right before the holidays. Thankfully, it's not COVID. I have just gotten my results here in the last hour. And so, I'm thankful that that's the case. But happy to be with you here today. And I think Melanie is there with you too. So, Melanie, anything you want to add before I get started? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Are you seeing that okay?
We're seeing text blocks.
No, that's not the right screen. Hold on. Too many screens open. I thought I shared the right one. Let me try again. Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, great. Well, so for those of you who have not met me before, Joy Mariner, I'm the Office Managing Partner of BDO, which is a public accounting firm in Anchorage. And we were there in Soldatna in September and October, working on your audit of the financial statements. This has been quite the year. And so, it was quite the audit. And my goal today is just to walk you through some basic results of the financial statement audit and to talk with you about some of the financial statement information that you will be, you have been provided. And we did do the audit of the 2021 financial statements. You should have two handouts. One is the audit wrap-up document, which is our required communications to you. And then the other one is the actual financial statements, the annual comprehensive financial report. That's the 133 pager, and that's a really exciting one. So, do you have both of those documents there?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, I would love for you to interrupt me. I've been doing Zoom enough to know how it works. So, feel free to get the mayor's attention. I can see him very easily. So, hello, Mr. Mayor. And just, you know, flag me down, stop me if you do have questions along the way. I'm happy to take them. And I'll pause at several moments during the presentation to ask you if you have questions. So, the audit wrap-up, the main page I want to focus on here is on the status of our audit. So, the audit is completed. It was issued with an unmodified opinion. You can see there in the third bullet point, an unmodified opinion on the financial statements as well as an unmodified opinion on your single audit. So, we do actually kind of three different audits. We audit your financial statements. We also do an audit in accordance with government auditing standards. And that's where we're looking at your compliance with laws and regulations, labor laws, workers' comp, submission of your payroll taxes, those kinds of things. And then we also do an audit of your compliance with your federal major programs. In this case, we audited the Coronavirus Relief Fund and the Airport Improvement Fund this year. So, the Airport Improvement Program. And we identify no findings on the audits of compliance of those major programs either. So, I really, from my perspective, that's the main point here, is it is a clean audit report. This is a very strange year in a lot of respects. There was a lot of additional funding that came through the city, as you know, as it relates to the Coronavirus Relief Funds and some other monies that you received this year. And we tested a lot of samples. So, we go through, we don't test every dollar that comes through the city, but we test samples of the grants that you set up and the programs that you set up. And as you, hopefully, you've seen the document that was prepared by your team about the use of the Coronavirus Relief monies. In fact, I've actually shared that with some of our national folks. I think that that document that was prepared by your team summarizing the use of your COVID money is perhaps one of the best, you know, summaries of the use of that money I've seen nationwide. And I've been working with cities all over the country to make sure that those monies were reported and finding, you know, working on compliance requirements. I'm part of the national team at BDO on advising folks on the Coronavirus Relief Fund and now ARPA. And I think that's just about the best document. So, if you've not seen that one, it is on your website, and I encourage you to read that. But we did test your use of those funds this year. And in a year when you didn't, you didn't hire four additional people in finance to get that money out the door, you really, a lot of volume went through your city out to the community, to the business owners, to the individuals who needed that assistance. And we didn't find any exceptions to our test work on any of those programs. So, we looked to see if the grant application was approved, if the money was approved for payment, that you followed your own procedures, and then that you also followed the intent of the council as it went with how the monies were to be allocated and spent. And we didn't find any exceptions. As it relates to internal control, I'm going to flip along here to page 10 of the audit wrap-up. So, as part of our role in the audit, the auditor is a great external control. And there's two types of main, main types of controls. There's preventive controls and detective controls. So, preventive controls prevent an error from ever happening. Detective ones, find them after it happened, so you have a chance to correct them. And so, we're required as your auditors to understand what your internal controls are, to identify what we think are key controls and evaluate whether those controls are properly designed. And then also to make sure they were implemented during the year. And we didn't identify any items that we need to bring to your attention that need to be corrected in terms of your internal control system. Some of the internal controls were shifted this year as a result of COVID and some of the changes that came through. And certainly, you added a lot of controls over these new grant programs to make sure they were administered properly. But we did not identify any issues to report to you as it relates to the internal controls. I'd also tell you about anything in the audit that I think is important for you to know about. If we identified fraud or abuse, if we had significant difficulties, disagreements, any significant related party transactions, nothing like that this year. Really good, smooth audit. And here I am in December presenting the results of the audit. There've been, for those of you who've been on council a while, you know that for the last few years, there have been, always seems like there's something that delays the issuance of your financial statements. And last year, I think it was the release of the compliance supplement for COVID-19 funding under CARES. And then, you know, the pension system has held it up in the past. It always seems like there's been something. And, you know, in this year, nothing held us up. Melanie was right on time with getting her draft of the financials to us. And we turned around and we're issuing before the December 31 timeframe. You have received, for 2020, you did receive your Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. And that is anticipated to be received also for the 2021 statements, which were completed in time for to be submitted by the December 31 deadline. So, congratulations to Melanie for sure. Her team works super hard. And I know your whole city is involved in ensuring a positive audit result and an unmodified opinion. So, if there are no questions, I'll pause for questions on the audit wrap-up before we hit a few highlights on the financial report.
Any questions from the council? I don't see any here.
Awesome. Okay, so the other document you have is the annual comprehensive financial report. This is 133 pager. I'm going to just briefly touch on what's contained in here. And on the table of contents, just so you can see this, I don't, I promised not to go through 133 pages with you today. But the financials do carry a lot of information. And this is one of those documents that you'll have for a long time, probably for 30 years at least. And it's a good reference to go back and see, okay, what did we spend in public safety this year? Or what did we report as the types of investments we held? You may go back in the past, from the, you know, in the future to the past to see that information, and that's contained here in the financials. So, there's an introductory section, which has the letter of transmittal. The letter of transmittal is really just a description of your city. If you're talking to somebody from another state, this is a good thing to give them or to pull some talking points about Soldatna from this letter of transmittal. You also have the certificate that you received. That was received here just the last couple of weeks, last year's results. They're a little bit behind. So, that was received for the 2020 certificate. And Melanie's team has been able to get that certificate for many years now. And we're excited to see that she received that for 2020 as well. It also has listed principal officials and an organization chart. And the next section is the financial section, where our independent auditor's report with that unmodified opinion is held there. There's also a management discussion and analysis from page 5 to 12. So, this is a good summary of the activity that happened during the year compared to last year. And it also gives you a little bit more detail about the why. What changed during the year that caused those shifts? What are your major capital projects that were occurring? Almost like an annual report for a company financials. I think this is a really good read. I'm not going to go through it in detail today. But I think this is a good place to just look for trends and also to get more information if you're not sure why something changed. The MVNA is a good place to find that. And then the basic financial statements are what we actually audit. And we're going to look at a couple of those statements here in a moment. But the financial statements really just show the activity of what happened during the year and what your financial position is at the end of June 2021. You also have a lot of supplementary information. Some of it's required, some of it's not required. The required information includes budget reports as well as your pension and OPEB details for the last 10 years. And then you also have some combining information on your funds, giving you more information about your specific funds and what happened in those funds. Lastly, there's Lastly, there's a federal schedule, a note to the federal schedule of expenditures of federal awards. It shows you how much you spend on your federal grants. And then the very last section is called the statistical section. And the statistical section is maybe my favorite. This is where, if I were sitting in your shoes in the council, this is where I would spend a little bit of time reading, because you can find, in a lot of cases, 10-year history of what happened with your fund balance for the governmental funds, or the changes in net position, or the tax revenues by source. You can also find information about demographics and economic statistics of the city in this section. So it's a really useful section for reference. If you, you know, want to keep this on your bookshelf, and when somebody asks you a question about your city, this is a good place to find that information. And then the results of our single audit, as I mentioned before, which was a clean or unmodified opinion on your federal major programs, are included at the back of this package. So let's cover a few key financial metrics here. And I'm going to start on page 30, which is your statement of net position. I don't expect you to be able to, to understand all of these numbers, but there's a few key things I want to cover with you. The statement of net position discloses for you what your assets are, the things that you own as a city, what your liabilities are, the things that you owe to others. And then what's left over is called net position. So in assets, the things that the city owns is primarily held in cash and investments and property and equipment. So capital assets, that's what we kind of call cap, property and equipment is capital assets. These are all the things that you own that are fixed assets, your buildings, your vehicles, your, your utility infrastructure, all of those kinds of things are included in capital assets. And then you also have quite a significant amount of cash and investments for various purposes. We'll look at that in a little bit. And then liabilities are things you owe to others. So there's a few things that you owe to vendors, those are accounts payable or accrued liabilities. But you do also have your bond and loan payable balances, which are a larger, large number here, about 3.5 million in total. And some of those loans are DEC loans that are at 1.5% interest, very low interest rate. And then your net pension and OPEB liabilities, these are the State of Alaska per system liabilities, 8.7 million this year, excuse me, at the end of the year. And that number did, you know, does fluctuate. You don't have really any say in what that number is. It's set by the State of Alaska actuaries. And so that number just fluctuates depending on the performance of the investments and the actuarial valuation of those liabilities carried at the state level. So this is just your pro-rated share of the state, full state pension liability for the pension system. So let's dive in a little bit more into what, what kind of is held in the different funds that you have. So these are your major funds, the general fund, public utility fund, COVID relief is new. Last year, last year was the first year you had it. This year, the numbers have changed quite a bit. And then your airport improvement capital project fund is your other major fund. And when you look at the general fund, in total, the fund balance has, has 19.2 million. So I look pretty carefully at the fund balance in the general fund, because the general fund is your operating fund. That's where most of your money is coming in and out, where you're tracking most of your governmental services. And so a total general fund fund balance of 19.2 million. When you take your assets, you back out what you owe to others, this is what you have left in the general fund. Of that, you as a council have committed 5.3 of that. And so kind of unassigned, unrestricted fund balance is at 12.8, 12.76 million this year. When you look at the, what changed in the fund balance for the general fund this year, in total, the general fund fund balance increased by 768,000. And I'm now on page 17. So this is the activity that happened during the year in these funds. So the general fund had total revenue of 12, just over $12 million. And if you note here, too, you also have that COVID-19 relief special revenue fund that had $8.3 million this year. 12 million in the general fund, total expenses of 9.6 million. For a change there, about 2.4 million. You also transferred money out of the general fund for a total change of 768. One thing I will note here, and the public utility fund is one I look pretty carefully at, are your charges for services in your utility funds, are they covering the cost of your operations? And in total, the public utility fund did have a positive change in your fund balance, and it is, at this point, at least in the current year, sustainable. Keep in mind that that does not have any depreciation in it. So the depreciation for the public utility fund is, I want to say it was over 1.2 million dollars. Don't, don't flip with me on this, but we do have a footnote disclosure on that, that I'll pull really fast, so you can have that. So total depreciation for the public utilities was about $1 million, just over 1 million. So right now, the public utility fund is showing a positive change of 605, but that does not include that $1 million of depreciation. So just keep that in mind as you kind of work through time. The public utility fund is not fully generating enough to cover capital, capital depreciation and infrastructure costs. So the COVID-19 fund, 8.3 million of revenue, you spent that on primarily emergency response and your grant programs. Some other costs were covered by that COVID money, including public safety costs that were typically in the past in the general fund, although some of those are additional costs as well. So total expenditures on your COVID money, 8.3 million. And then your airport project, you did have $2.2 million in airport improvement funds that were spent this year on Capital LA. Continue to invest in the airport improvements, and the FAA has provided a lot of funding for that in the past, and even going forward, receiving, seeing even more FAA funding. So are there questions on this particular statement? Because I know I just went through a lot of information. Any questions on the activity for the current year?
Any council questions? Don't see any.
Okay. The other thing I also look kind of closely at is your total expenditures compared to your government, your general fund fund balance. So your general fund fund balance that's unassigned at this point, and we looked at that before, it was 12.7 million. Your total expenditures in the general fund of 9.6 million. Keep in mind, that number is really more like 10 million when you adjust for the COVID public safety. So you have just over a year's worth of expenditures available in your general fund fund balance that's unassigned. And that's really important to monitor. I think we've been telling you for years to make sure you have enough for working capital, if there was ever an issue that might require you to have enough kind of in reserve to be sustainable. Well, if COVID taught us anything, it's that we should be prepared. And so having a sufficient fund balance, I think there was a lot of uncertainty pretty early on with what would happen with the COVID-19 shutdowns. And having that cushion there really puts you in a place where you can continue to employ your people and to provide those government services. So I like seeing that, over a year of expenditures available in your fund balance for working capital. It certainly allows you to have the flexibility, if needed, to make important decisions when things are not as predicted. So I won't cover a whole lot more, except to just say there are additional information here in the notes to the statements about the different things that we've talked about. So if you want to have more information, for example, about your cash and investments, you can turn to page 33 and see what your investment policy is, how your cash is invested, and what types of securities. There's also information in the notes regarding your capital assets, what they're invested in, what types of capital assets you have. And there's additional information about your receivables, your transfers, your debt, your DEC loan is your primary debt at this point, as well as a small amount still in general obligation bonds. And so if you do want more information, you're welcome to turn to the notes to find it. There's a lot of information here about your fund balances as well. So when we talked about that, $12 million of unassigned fund balance, we can see what has been committed. And that also includes a $5 million reserve for the general fund reserve for unexpected or unanticipated recurring events. So that is kind of a cushion you as a council have already committed to making sure is there and is not spent down. And as I mentioned, there's additional information in here about the different funds. So if you want to see what happened with the budget to actual for the general fund, that information is here. Same thing for the public utility fund. And the statements themselves do provide a lot of additional detail if you should ever want to refer back to them. The last thing I'll mention before we close is just on page, let's see what page this is, 85. This is your total expenditures of federal awards. Two major ones on here are your airport improvement program for runway rehabilitation, as well as the coronavirus relief fund, which came actually in two tranches of money. One came directly from the state and the other through the borough. So, you know, total there, this is just the amount that was spent, not necessarily the amount that was awarded, because some of it was spent in the prior year. So total amount of your total expenditures in federal awards this year are $10.6 million. Again, big lift for your team. No findings reported, and so I just want to thank them for their hard work, for the community. And I'll pause there and stop and ask for any questions there may be.
Is there any council questions or comments? I don't see any.
Great. And so that concludes my comments. I work for you as the council. So if there's other items that come up, if you have questions throughout the year, please feel free to get in touch with Melanie or Stephanie, and they can direct those to me. Or if you have concerns and would like to contact me directly, you're welcome to do that. It's always a pleasure to work with your team. And again, my apologies for not being able to be there with you in person today. Next year, I will, I will be there, hopefully. And this whole thing can be behind us.
Thank you very much. Well, I guess we'll move on to the next agenda item here. And that would be public hearings. Item eight on the agenda. Ordinance 2021-025, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $6,000 in the general fund for a Federal American Rescue Plan Act ARPA grant passed through the State of Alaska Department of Education and Early Development for COVID-19 response and recovery at the Joyce K. Carver Memorial Soldatna Public Library, introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. And a second from Mr. Carey. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This is one of two ordinances that the council can consider tonight related to ARPA funds for the library. And our city librarian, Rachel Nash, is with us here in the room. She's also provided memos in the packet that describe her intended use of those funds. And we recommend that the council approve them. And I'll stop there since Rachel's here. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to direct those to her. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing now is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand. If you would like to comment, app users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I see no one here in the chambers wishing to speak. And looking at the Zoom, I see no hands raised. Hearing no one who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson? I'm sorry, absent. Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
And councilmember Carey?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
The ordinance 2021-025 is passed on a 5-0 vote. Moving on to the next item, ordinance 2021-026, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $18,770 in the general fund for a Federal American Rescue Plan Act ARPA grant passed through the State of Alaska Department of Education and Early Development for Chromebooks, mobile hotspots, and AWE literacy stations at the Joyce K. Carver Memorial Soldatna Public Library, introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have moved the adoption of ordinance 2021-026.
May I have a second? Mr. Chilton. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This is the second library-related ARPA grant up for consideration tonight. It's a slightly larger amount of funding, $18,770. And the memo in the packet describes those items that library director Nash is recommending we purchase with those eligible grant funds. And she'd be happy to answer questions if there are any. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I see no one here in the chambers wishing to speak. And I see no hands raised under Zoom. With no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for Rachel, I guess, on the, well, I guess, so Chromebooks, I assume that would be like for checking out, or people would take those? And I assume management software is to, I don't, maybe I'm not a very trusting person. This seems like things could go sideways in a hurry. Please, please let me know what this is.
Sure, yes. You, you've got it right. The Chromebooks are for circulation. And the management software is to make sure that confidentiality is maintained. So if someone forgets to log out of their Gmail or what have you, it will wipe it completely clean afterward, the patron turns it back in.
Just one follow-up. So have we, we had, have we had a program like this before? Or do we check out Chromebooks or laptops or something like that already? And is there like a huge amount of interest in that? I guess this, this is a surprising thing to me. I just don't know.
Yes, we currently check out laptops, and our laptops are, I believe, going on four years old now. So as you may know, that's pretty old for a laptop. Other libraries in the state and nationwide have had similar programs. And for instance, Keen Eye, and theirs is very, very popular. They can't keep the Chromebooks on the shelf. So yes, we're, we believe that it'll continue to be popular. There have been times that we haven't had enough laptops, but usually the main issue is that the laptops are old enough that they're not working properly. So we want to make sure to maintain good services for our patrons.
Thank you. This is a great program. And I just, yeah, it was something I wasn't familiar with. So thanks for explaining.
Mr. Chilton?
And just to clarify, are you going to be checking out hotspots with the Chromebooks for those that don't have home internet?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carey?
Are these items that we would have, most likely, you would have requested funds from city funds to do these, but instead we're going to use these? Or are these things that we wouldn't have done, but because we have this unanticipated money, we're going to do it?
A little of both. The Chromebooks, we probably would have needed to replace because that was an ongoing program. The mobile hotspots, that was something that we wanted to try as a pilot project, but it's pretty expensive. So this is something that we're able to try out. And certainly, the last two years have shown that there's a lot of inequity in our community around internet access. So this is a great opportunity for us to help those that don't have access at home.
Excellent. Thank you for doing this.
Any other questions from the council? Let's see, I forgot where I was at on here. Okay, no other council comments. We'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Ordinance 2021-026 passes on a 5-0 vote. Going on to the next, the agenda item is number nine, new business. And everything under that one has been done through the consent agenda. We'll move on to other action memorandum, 2021-023, confirming candidates for nomination to committees to the Alaska Municipal League, introduced by the mayor. May I have a motion to approve? Ms. Hutchings?
I'll make a motion to approve action memorandum 2021-23, confirming candidates for nomination to committees of the Alaska Municipal League.
A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. A report from myself. Since that list came out, Mr. Carey has contacted me, and he would like to move from the COVID committee to the infrastructure committee. So, if there's no objections to that, we'll make that change in that action memo.
Mayor Whitney, can we have a motion to make? Can we have a motion to change?
Oh.
Amendment memo?
All right.
Thank you.
I guess I'll need a motion. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In dealing with memorandum twenty twenty-one oh twenty-three, I would move that the nominee of Dave Carey be taken off of the COVID committee, and under infrastructure, where there were no other nominees, that David Carey be nominated there.
May I have a second?
Just a quick, I don't see a COVID committee. I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Excuse me, opioid.
Okay.
It was the opioid.
All right, all right.
Sorry, your friend.
Yeah, okay. Speaking to you.
Second.
So, we have a second?
That was Ms. Parker.
Ms. Vice Mayor Parker, go ahead.
I just seconded, that's all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carey?
Thank you. And I was interested in the opioid, particularly from work at the prison. However, when I saw that another council person was also interested in that, and quite frankly, from a professional and probably from a personal standpoint, that that other person has a lot more knowledge, it just seemed to me much more reasonable, so that as this moves on, I felt it increased the probability that I might get appointed to something. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Seeing no one here in the council chambers wishing to speak on it, and I see no hands raised. So, we're back to the vote on the amendment. We'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Ruffridge?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
The amendment to the action memorandum passed on a five-zero vote. Now, back to the main motion. Call for the roll again.
Councilmember Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
The action memorandum passed on, amended, passed on a five-o vote. Hopefully, you all had an opportunity to read the email that went out earlier, I believe today, on the infrastructure meeting that took place yesterday, and there was information there and a recording, I believe. All right, moving on to mayor and council reports. Mayor's report and proclamations. I do happen to have a proclamation here that I will read. This proclamation is, whereas Shelley Sainer has been serving as a Soldatina City Clerk for eight years, and whereas Shelley has demonstrated professional and dedication, professionalism and dedication in fulfilling the responsibilities of this position, including administering city elections with integrity, acting as parliamentary, parliamentary advisor to the city council, and conducting vital training for elected and appointed city officials, and whereas Shelley has completed a major project to create a digital archive of Soldatina public records, better preserving our city history and improving access to current and historical records, and whereas Shelley has overseen an updated, an update of policies and process to increase community access and update the reservation procedures for Soldatina Community Memorial Park, and whereas Shelley's contribution to the city of Soldatina during her tenure as city clerk have enhanced public access to local government, including facilitating a transition to video conferencing during the COVID-19 pandemic, to allow meetings to remain transparent and open to the public. And whereas Shelley received the prestigious Master Municipal Clerk designation from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks in the year 2016, and whereas Shelley was elected by her peers to the position of President of the Alaska Association of Municipal Clerks, and served with distinction in the year 2018, and whereas Shelley will be leaving her position with the city of Soldatina to advance her career as a city clerk. Now, therefore, I, Paul Whitney, Mayor of the city of Soldatina, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Soldatina, do hereby recognize the contributions made by this dedicated public official to the city of Soldatina, Shelley Sainer. And I commend and thank Shelley for years of service to the citizens of Soldatina and her dedication in making our municipal government stronger and more accessible. Dated this fifteenth day of December, 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there's the proclamation. And I've been, well, I've spent two years, three years on the City Planning and Zoning Commission, seven years as a city council member, and now my second year as city mayor. And during that time, Shelley has tried to keep me on the straight and narrow path, and when she has failed, or when I have failed to do that, she's been pretty good on diplomatically chewing me out. And I appreciate that. So, on behalf of myself, I purchased this little gift for Shelley, and as she is transitioning to the dark side and moving on to a different galaxy, I hope that when she uses this every day, she will take a look at it and think to herself, what have I done? And that is for you. And you can tell I'm not very good at wrapping.
No, but you're good at knots. Carry all of my goods to the new place and think of you every time.
You can even put your coffee cup in there.
See, that's my water bottle. Yes, thank you very much.
And I've got a little tag on there that has your initials on it. I was going to add the city of Soldatina to it, but I didn't think that would go over real well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your years of service, and we will, we will all miss you.
Thank you.
I think that's all I'm going to say for tonight, other than the fact that I'm catching an airplane tonight, so I think I'll take this annual comprehensive financial report with me so I can sleep on the plane. So, we'll move on to council reports on boards and commissions. Soldatina Chamber of Commerce Board meeting, Mr. Chilton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors met this last Friday on the tenth for our last meeting of the year. Not too much on the agenda, but a couple big things to note. We did formally decide to transition to a quarterly meeting schedule moving forward, and I'm excited to see that happen. The chamber staff is currently well underway on redesigning their visitor guide and getting that ready to start distributing throughout the state. There's been a really strong focus on trying to attract in-state tourism to our area over the last two years, and I think they've done excellent work in developing that new tourism path. Kind of in tandem with that, they're also working with some local social media influencers to try a different tactic for in-state marketing, and it's kind of interesting to see that unfold, and I'm excited to see where that goes. The chamber was also recently received word that their PPP loan has been formally forgiven, so that was a good financial boon for the chamber. And then, as Tim mentioned tonight, they have been working really closely in partnership with the Kenai Chamber of Commerce to develop the new Kenai Central Peninsula Young Professionals Group. This is actually kind of a reincarnation of the former Kenai Young Professionals Group with a partnership that's joint between the chambers now, and that's been working very well, as Tim has mentioned. It's growing very rapidly, and they are actually looking at establishing a new quarterly lunch and learn event for the Kenai Central Peninsula Young Professionals to attract new members and make it more than just a social gathering, but really something that provides meaningful value for helping these young entrepreneurs really kind of develop their businesses and then grow within our community. As far as upcoming events go, we have the January twenty-six Chamber Awards Luncheon coming up. Would highly encourage any and all of you to go if possible. And lastly, the chamber is bringing back the Frozen River Fest on February nineteenth, and planning on that is going well, and we're excited to see that kick off and get people out in the park. And hopefully, it's a bit warmer than it has been recently, because it's been awful, and I'm ready for something different weather-wise. So, that's all.
Are there any questions for Mr. Chilton? Moving along to the next item on the agenda, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Great job, Melanie, on the audit and the financial statements, as always. It's a lot of work, and I hope that you feel sufficiently recognized for those efforts and the good job that you do. Thanks for coming tonight, Rachel, also. The first item that was in the packet is a memo from Melanie that's an update on our use of contingency funds. This is a standard memo that we issue to the council every time we dip into one of these accounts that are in our operating budget, and this was for the purchase of a deionized water filtration system at the wastewater treatment plant. This will allow us, rather than purchasing deionized water, to make it ourself, and that's a really critical component of our sampling and reporting process. So, this will, this fifteen thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars is coming from the utility funds contingency account, and this will allow us to, we believe, have more consistent results from our lab work at the plant. There's a couple other things I laid down at the dais tonight. One is, I did attend and testify at the Kenai Peninsula Borough Assembly Meeting last Tuesday regarding the ordinance for Planning Commission membership. There was quite a bit of testimony. Many of the cities were represented, both by the managers, mayors, council members, and ultimately, I've provided you a copy of that final legislation as amended. I think it was a very good outcome, accomplishes many of the items that the council had previously described as being priorities for you. The next item that I laid down is just a copy of a letter, really generous letter that we received from all three members of our congressional delegation. So, Senators Murkowski, Sullivan, and Representative Young jointly signed this letter on December tenth, which is a letter of support for the Soldatina Riverfront Redevelopment Project. So, we were able to get this to the folks at the Economic Development Agency, EDA, prior to them making a final decision on our grant, and I really do appreciate Senator Murkowski's legislative aide, Lauren Eckle, who coordinated this effort on our behalf from Washington, DC. So, very nice, and thank you to those members of our delegation for lending their support to that project. I attended a board meeting of the Alaska Remote Seller Sales Tax Commission today. We met as a board, and we discussed appointing members to the two committees that we have, two standing committees. One is finance and one is policy, and we'll be soliciting interest from the member communities to have folks step up and serve on those committees. We had our annual board meeting at the AML Conference last month, and I was reappointed as vice president of that board, so I'll be able to continue serving in that capacity for another three-year term. We received a hundred of the at-home COVID-19 testing kits from Kenai Public Health, and we requested an additional three hundred and received three hundred more through the State Department of Public Health and Social Services. So, I am researching and revising our own internal personnel policy as related to COVID-19 mitigation to craft a new strategy for our employees to be able to utilize these at-home test kits in returning to work sooner, testing in certain circumstances, clearing them to come to work. And I'm really hopeful, because I think this will expand the testing that we're doing among our employees, and I think it'll provide a level of protection for us here in the workplace, but also increase convenience for our employees. So, we've got those available now. For the public that might want to have access to that, they can contact Kenai Public Health. There are some of these at-home test kits that are available, that people can reach out to Kenai Public Health, and it's the same swab that many of us have done many times now over the past two years, only you can do it in your own home, and it's a rapid result, and it's really convenient. You can test again. There's actually two swabs in each one of these boxes, and you can do it at your own home. So, I'd encourage anyone to reach out to Kenai Public Health if that's something of interest to them. Just wanted to share that information. Congratulations, Shelley. We're going to do our goodbyes tomorrow here with the employees, so I'll save some of my comments, other than it's been really great to work beside you all these years, and I wish you luck. And to the council, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and see you in 2022, and anything goes, right? Thank you.
Another one down the tubes.
Mr. Mayor, Shelley would like to provide an additional report, if that's okay. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you very much for the proclamation. It has been an honor working with all of you. I have grown so much in my time with the city. Second of all, this wrapping up, trying to make sure that I leave a very clean, organized office for whoever takes over, has got me working in the filing system, touching files that I knew were there, but I never went through. And I found a file on Monday, and we went on a little hunt. Thank you to Councilmember Hutchings. It's one of the things, my favorite things, is to just mess in the history. When I get ten minutes, I'll go through minutes, because I'm creating a timeline of people as they served in the positions. So, this was really interesting, and I'm curious if anybody, other than the people that I talked to, were aware of the fact that when we had our city hall dedication ceremony in nineteen eighty-seven, that number's easy for me to memorize, because that's the year I graduated, that there was also a time capsule placed in this building. And I don't see anybody else going, yes, I knew that. So, on Monday, I reached out to Councilmember Hutchings, because at the time, her mother was our mayor, and thought maybe she knew something about it. And we went through the list of council members at the time, and she started calling to find out where it is. So, I can tell you where it is. I also know what's in it, but I think that we should save that for someday when they decide to open it. But it is in this building, if anybody wants to take a guess, or let me tell you. And then I made sure that notes for the next clerk, thirty-five years from now, can find it and knows where it is, and at that point, it'll have been in place for seventy years, so they can put a timer on it, maybe consider opening it thirty years from then. But it is in our entryway behind the Mason's dedication plaque on the wall.
I hope I'll be here in thirty-five years to see that.
I thought it was actually really interesting that we really didn't know it was there. So, that was a fun piece of history to find in my last week with the city. Thank you.
Were there any questions for the city manager? Mr. Carey?
Because I don't know who else to ask, in terms of the ordinance from the borough. Do you know, did they correct the spelling of Ham Gulch on the ordinance?
If they haven't, I'd be, we'd be happy to bring it to their attention.
I sure would like to see that.
Thank you, sir.
It's the geography teacher. Pardon me?
It's because Ham Gulch is gone.
So, under the single member district number three, you think they took Ham Gulch out?
Yes, sound as Assembly District Three, because you.
Okay. Anyway, it's misspelled, it should be corrected, if it still exists.
Anything, any else for the city manager? Okay, moving on to the next item, is twelve, public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Seeing no one here in the council chambers wishing to speak, we'll move on to Zoom, and I see no hands raised there. So, next item on is number thirteen, council comments, and we'll start with Student Representative Knowles.
Well, the student council is currently working on a project where we wrap presents and then place them underneath a tree that's in the library, and they all have age ranges on them, and kids can come in to the library and pick a present, and then open them on Christmas.
Thank you. We'll next move on to Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Start by saying, wishing everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and I want to make a couple of comments on what I'm thankful for this year. I'm thankful for getting through another year of the pandemic, and that our community remains strong. remains strong, and let's hope that we don't have another year like this. I'm thankful for the amazing staff that we have here at the city of Saldana. People like Shelley Sanner, like our chief, like Melanie, like our city manager, and the rest of all of the staff. I want to wish the chief well as he moves forward in the next adventure in his life. And finally, well, this is Shelley's last meeting for Saldana City Council. I won't say goodbye. We will still remain friends, and maybe even get in a round of golf next year, next summer, and finish it up at the 19th hole. Thank you, Shelley, for all the work and help and support that you have provided over the years. You've been a jewel. You'll be missed.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have just a few things, kind of in the same vein as Vice Mayor Parker. On the at-home test kits that City Manager Queen was mentioning, those are actually available at the Walk-in Clinic at the Y as well, if people need to grab those and take them home to have them. It's somewhat limited supply, but for now, there's plenty down there. Also, I want to thank Melanie for the work on our financial reporting and audits. I agree with the mayor in that this would be a document that I would take on a plane to help me rest, but I don't think Melanie gets that pleasure. I think this is the thing that has to keep her awake. And you just do such a fantastic job. I mean, there's, I try to dig into these things to look, you know, in detail, and be kind of picky, and everywhere you look, and I think that's why you win awards and have national recognition for some of the work that we do at this city, just because it's detailed and organized and very clearly presented and accurate, most of all. And I think that's a huge thing for us to be proud of. Also, to our clerk, Shelley, I will certainly miss you, and thank you so much for the work that you've done with the city and for me personally. I will say, though, the thing that I will hold always is your voice in the back of my head about the phrase "OMA violation." Will forever be terrified of that, as I probably should be. But Shelley taught OMA very, very well, and very clearly. So thank you for that, Shelley. And to our police chief, certainly had great interactions with him throughout the years, and appreciate his work in our police station, as well as holding our standards for policing very high. And I think that is, especially these times, especially good. I did notice at the end of our financial report, I'm not sure if you guys saw that, there was reports about services in our city, and one of those was policing. And I'm not sure what happened in 2013, but a lot of people got arrested in that year, so I'd like to find out what happened there. But our arrests have gone way down, so I just don't know if the people of Saldana have been kinder to each other, or kinder to our police, or whatnot. But again, Merry Christmas to everybody. I wish us a Happy New Year, and I'd always kind of wondered why that was a statement. This year, I get it. We need a Happy New Year very, very badly. So, wish that to everyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Well, unlike a lot of you, I'm more like Melanie. I love that financial report, and I will pour over it. And I really want to thank Shelley. I have worked with Shelley on so many projects over the years, and I thought we did an excellent job with Home Rule, and it took a lot of hard work on Shelley's part for that, so thank you very much. And it's just great working with all of you, and I hope you have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Mr. Carey?
I feel blessed that I get to be a part of the city of Saldana. And part of that is certainly the staff that works for the city, the work the city as a whole does, the leadership of the city, those officials that keep us in line. I can really relate about Open Meetings Act, you know, once I got back on, I was concerned even opened my email. A couple other people looked at an email I saw, did I violate something by looking at it? And so, I just kept my computer closed until I came to city council meetings. And I'm sure that was unnecessary, but I felt correctly chastised on not making that mistake. The one thing that I see, that I am looking forward to in terms of next year, is the students coming to our meeting. We are an excellent center for education, for people getting a chance to see how democracy is supposed to work, how local government is supposed to work. The members of the council, again, I hope I'm not being presumptive, but I think we all even like each other, which is kind of nice, which certainly makes it much easier to work with each other, to listen to each other, to consider the perspective of each other. I'd say the same in terms of, what I see at least, in terms of council with staff and those people in this building, and so that we particularly, I believe, the nation needs examples to help our young adults that are coming up see the way it should be. Saldana is the way it should be. And I'm not at all saying that Kenai and other places aren't equally, but I don't know them. I know this one. And this is a wonderful place, and I certainly hope, in terms of community action, that as the schools get going and they're able to reach out and make people go to more things together, I certainly hope that they will resume coming here and watching a city council meeting. And I wouldn't mind if they fall asleep during them, because they're so nice and easy and just pretty typical. And so to me, again, looking forward and thinking about a Happy New Year, I certainly hope that we'll get to see that resume. And I absolutely encourage everyone and hope everyone has a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Mr. Chilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ultimately, Carey's comments there are giving me flashbacks of my mandatory reporting assignment coming here from Mr. Harbison's government class back in high school years ago, sitting right there. Anyway, I just wanted to say thank you to Rachel and the excellent staff you have over the library. You know, I think in the three-something years I've been on the council so far, I've lost count of the number of ordinances we've had, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations for the libraries you guys pull in grant after grant. I'd really like to see if there's any numbers out there as far as the amount of grant money you guys manage to pull into the library, because I'm sure it's probably up there. Excellent, yes. Thank you. Secondly, thank you to Chief Mularick and his excellent work protecting our city and running the excellent operation that they have over at the police department here. And Shelley, I don't really know what more I have to say that hasn't been said. Our city is at a loss without you, and thank you for all the excellent years of service that you've done for us. And your abundant patience with my many hypothetical questions on the Robert's Rules and Processes and what-ifs with that, so always going to remember that. And lastly, just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, as Justin said, we all need one. So, I hope you all enjoy some time to detach and spend with family this year. It's well needed. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is executive session, and there is no reason for one this evening. And last is the meeting announcements. And December 16th, 2021, Airport Commission Meeting at 5:30 PM. January 5th, 2022, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting at 5:30 PM. And January 12th, 2022, City Council Meeting at 6:00 PM. And I also like to wish all of you a Merry Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I can do nothing but commend all of our staff, department heads, and all of our staff members for the job they've done this year and that they continue to do into the future. With nothing else on our agenda, we are now adjourned.